For primary candidates in the Leavenworth City, Lansing City, and Leavenworth School Board, primary elections which will be upcoming on the local ballot. This forum is being sponsored by the Leavenworth Area Chamber of Commerce, Leavenworth-Lansing Area Chamber of Commerce, to be correct. And I want to thank them in behalf of all the candidates that will be here today. So none of the candidates need to express any thanks whatsoever because I'm going to give each candidate a limited period of time in which to make their case to be elected to these respective governing positions. We do appreciate the effort that was put out by the Chamber and by Mr. Charlie Greger, Chamber Executive, to put this forum together. We're going to have thirteen candidates in our first segment. All of these people are candidates for the Leavenworth City Commission. Ground rules essentially are, after I introduce the candidate, that candidate will have four minutes in which to make his or her case. After that, I have a right for one minute to ask follow-up questions based upon whether the candidate says, or what they might have said in public, or some other issue that may be pertinent to the election. So now I want to get underway and introduce our first candidate, who is Laura Jess Gasberry. Is that correct, Laura?
Yes, it is.
Laura is a resident of the city of Leavenworth, of course. She's married, has two children, and this is her first time in the political arena. She has worked for the American Red Cross as the Health and Safety Services Director, and she's been in a substitute teacher role in the primary and secondary grades. She's graduated from Leavenworth High, University of Kansas, and that's where she got her education degree. Thanks you, thank you for being with us, Laura.
Thank you for having me.
I just want to say, because you're the first one up here today, that one of our ground rules is that four-minute rule, so I'm going to set this timer on four minutes. And I'll bet you that you terminate your comments right before that goes off.
Okay.
You tell the people that are watching on Channel Two, why did you want to be elected to the City Commission, would you please?
I've been humbled by so many people who've come up to me and asked me to run for the City Commission. It's been a wonderful experience. I have no political experience other than working in the community as a volunteer for political campaigns. I have a lot to bring. I am a mother, and I am a wife and a friend of so many people. I've talked to so many of you, whether at the place of our worship, or where I work, in the schools, at the playgrounds, at the parks. I bring honesty and integrity to the office. I have no hidden agendas. I don't have a business. I have no other reason to run other than to serve the people of Leavenworth. It's very important to me to make this the best place to raise a family, for not just children, those who can't vote, but for those who do vote and will vote. It's not for just the olds or the young, it's for everybody. This is the best place to live. I have a hope and a vision that it can be better, that we can make some improvements. I expect accountability for all people on the commission. We represent the people, we represent their votes. I promise that people can come to me and ask me questions. Communication comes in two parts, not just talking, it's listening. And I believe I have that ability to listen to the people of Leavenworth.
Laura, thank you. That was a brief, very telling introduction of yourself. I want to follow up with a couple of questions, if you would.
Sure.
One of the things that's on the agenda of the commission here is the rehab of the City Hall. Have you read some of the stories about those plans?
I've read some of the stories and have talked to some of the people that work here.
What are your thoughts about that?
Well, I would like to see some improvements. After going to some of the meetings, I believe we can make a difference here and make some improvements to better it for everybody. But I'm concerned about the cost, that's very important. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about any kind of expenditure. But I believe that we need to make some improvements, definitely.
All right, what about intergovernmental cooperation? I note that in recent months, the city of Leavenworth and the city of Lansing finally entered into an agreement to put a stoplight out of Eisenhower and Shrine Park Road. Did you read about that?
Yes, I did.
How would you promote agreements of that sort between our various governmental entities?
Well, I would like to see us work more with the different communities, the different aspects of the city and the county. One thing I was real impressed with was the Sheriff and Police Department working together for the upcoming academy for the citizens, which would help all of us feel safer in the community that we live. So that's, it's a start. I think we can do better at it, and I hope that we can do better at it.
Laura, thank you for coming and participating today. I'm sure that people remember your remarks when they go to the polls. Our next candidate is Larry Deddy. Mr. Deddy has previously served on the Leavenworth City Commission. He can tell us when that was. He's married to Sharon Deddy. He's been a longtime resident of Leavenworth. He's been in the automotive business in one form or another for some years. Larry, it's nice to have you with us.
Thank you, it's nice being here.
All right, let me set the chicken here.
Okay.
And I'm going to turn you loose for four minutes.
Yeah, I'll probably come post four minutes.
All right. Well, tell the voters out there, why did you want to be elected to the City Commission, would you?
Okay, several reasons, really. One, as I assume most of the other candidates who have participated in this, have been approached by either one person or one group or whatever. Secondly, as a prior City Commissioner, I was elected to a four-year term. Due to a decision made by myself regarding my family, I stepped down about midway of that term. That incident, which justified that at that time, no longer exists nor will it exist again. So I would like to continue my service to the city. I felt that during the time that I was on the commission, really it was in the warm-up years, into my second year, I was becoming more active, more diligent in what we were doing, and seen a lot of things that I'd like to try to make some changes with. And during that same course, over the years that I've been out of the commission, I've viewed it courtesy of Channel Two and the other tapes that we've had, and occasionally coming to a meeting, and following it in our local paper. Several things that I'd like to make comments on, one is, I know that you've spent quite a bit of money on our infrastructure. Leavenworth being one of the oldest cities in Kansas, or the oldest city in Kansas, is reaching the point where a lot of our infrastructure is starting to fail, and it's money justified that is being spent.
So you basically say you agree with the agenda of improvements?
Of the improvements, yes, on the infrastructure. I think if we get to the point of where we caught back up, the amount of money that we're spending, which, you know, in some years can be millions of dollars to put a sewer line in, this is something that you can drive down the street and not see. You know, so a lot of people don't really see it as an improvement, but it's an improvement for us now, it's an improvement for our children and for our grandchildren. I feel that I represent a conservative viewpoint, or conservative view on the commission. I may look at and analyze things differently than some of the other people do. My thought on it, and it is no criticism intended whatsoever, is that if we have a commission that is, say, corporate mindset, has a corporate background, or a military background, whatever it is, you're not going to, or my, I guess my concern is that we could represent all aspects of the city. And it comes into the pure question of it. To totally, I think, represent everybody of this city, be it unemployed, underemployed, minimum wage, currently working, retired, or no need to work, we need to have a diversified commission. And this is somebody that's been there and done that, you know, that has had some struggles. And also you need people that have the higher education levels, that have the corporate background. What you want, I feel, is a good mingling of all these people, so that you can bring out the debate, and have different viewpoints to look at certain items that's on the agenda, be it buildings, or improvements, or the budgets. And speaking of the budget, I think that it's easy for the cities or for government entities to appropriate money when there's a shortcoming. And that's the way the system works. But as a homeowner, and speaking as, and for the other homeowners, it's not as easy at the end of that month to appropriate that additional money when you have some unforeseen expenses. So I'm not criticizing the current commission for wasting money or blowing the money, is that I think we need to take a closer look at some of our budgetary items, and some of these items that may have frills on them, let's reduce them, or let's put them on the shelf until, you know, that additional money is there.
I'm going to have to interrupt you, dear Larry, and ask you a question.
Sure.
To follow up, we're talking about, or you've been talking about some of the permanent improvements in the infrastructure and hard assets around the community. Several of them come to mind, swimming pool project, their proposal to do a walking trail along Three Mile Creek, which would involve substantial expenditure of money. How would you feel about that project?
The Three Mile Creek?
Right.
Okay, to be truthful with you, I haven't followed that particular item real close. I have no problem offering these nature trails. It was one of the items that was on the agenda during my term, and consequently, that was voted down monetarily and as a safety issue. On this particular thing, it would come down to the bottom line again, can we afford it?
All right. With that, we'll terminate the interview. Thank you very much, very for being with us today.
Thank you for the invitation.
You bet. Our next candidate today is Phil Martin. Phil Martin has also been a candidate for office in the past, and perhaps he will address that issue with us today. Mr. Martin is married to Jessica, who's a schoolteacher. He has three daughters. How old are they, Phil?
Thirty-two, twenty-one, and twenty.
So they're in a position where they can give you advice now, right?
They do, too.
All right. Phil's a life resident of the city, and he's a businessman here in the city of Leavenworth. Phil, would you tell our audience why did you want to be elected to the commission?
Well, this is my fourth time running, so I feel as though the citizens and people I talk to are interested in me doing this. Sometimes I get the feeling that that has given to me after this many times. But I'm concerned about the city and where the city is going. I'm a big fodder on keeping the old part of the city. I love the historic value of this town, and I'd like to see that to continue, rather than tear things down to see if perhaps we could keep them.
Talking about historic buildings primarily?
I'm talking about historic buildings, structures, that's not necessarily a building. We have some buildings downtown, some of the buildings you see have the old signs still on the brick facet. One of my big things for a long time is to maybe get those repainted so people can see what we had at long times here. The infrastructure is big to me, so I'll go on to that, and I'll skip around on things. And it is an old town, and things have been falling apart for a while. But some things really bother me. We have a Grand Avenue in town that has been closed down for three years. To me, this is very unacceptable. In three years, I think the commission and the staffships have found some way by now that that street should not have been closed down. The voting that we've done lately, a lot of controversy over that, including the Aquatic Center. I'm for, I know Woman Pool is, needs to be replaced. I'm for an Aquatic Center to a certain point, not the full-blown that they had presented with us, but I'm for where Woman Park is now. As being, you know, for the history and saving, saving historical structures, I hated to see when the northeast pool went. I would have rather seen that stayed and, you know, replaced it. It concerns me, like with Woman Pool, that it's deteriorated. The pool and the bathhouse up there haven't deteriorated in the last six or eight years. It's been deteriorating for fifteen and twenty. So my concern is, why haven't we been working for the last ten or fifteen years to take care of this? Sometimes I think things are let go too far to where, when it's finally time that we have to do something with them, then it costs us more money. I'm concerned about some of the money that we spend, and I'm going to throw it out like the welcome signs of Leavenworth. You have the word "Leavenworth" in the big black letters that you can't see at night, hard to see during daytime. But my main concern on the welcome signs is we've forgotten the word "welcome." As far as I'm concerned, it's just telling you that you're here. We have a welcome center that is a nice building, maybe spent too much to build it, but I think the welcome center, we should get with some of the civic groups, it should be manned. Nobody wants, you know, not that nobody wants, but it's hard to come into the town and come to a welcome center, and you go in and all you're talking to is a machine.
All right. But you wouldn't be in favor of hiring somebody manned it? The city hiring somebody?
If that's what we needed, maybe so. I would prefer, I think that with the civic groups in town, that we would find enough volunteers for someone to go up, you know, a couple hours here, a couple hours there, and during a certain point of the day, have them manned.
Okay. Let me follow up on one of your first comments, and that is, you were concerned about the direction the city was taking. What is it that you mean? Can you be more specific?
Well, I think we're focusing more on doing things that need to be done, but I think we need to do them on down the line. What we need to do is take care of what we've got right now, and focus some on progressing in growth and industry and economics and stuff. But we also need to spend the time on what we've got improving in.
Okay. Phil, thank you. That's the end of our time, but I appreciate your being here, and I'm sure the voters in the city of Leavenworth likewise appreciate your presence. The next candidate that'll be with us today is Joe Oliver. While Joe's coming forward, let me tell you that Joe is married to Mary and has two children, Mary and Karen. And Joe has been active in politics, partisan politics, and has now expressed an interest in running for a political position, or maybe we should say nonpartisan position, on the Leavenworth City Commission. Joe, welcome today.
Thank you.
Joe, I see you've got a degree from Park College, and you're retired as a programmer, analyst at Fort Myers, is that correct? How would that background help you be a good City Commissioner?
Well, first of all, most programmers must think logically. No honey intended on present day commissioner, of course. And also, I've worked with people in the government as part of my job. I also worked on something that was known as BRIS, and we had something called inter-service support group, I guess it's, this is a military term. And what we did was, we shared services between branches of the service, the Army, the Air Force, the Navy, the Marine Corps, et cetera. I feel as though that with that background, perhaps in city government, we could share resources with the state and county, the city. We could join together in a united effort. I look at Carol, the mayor of Kansas City, Kansas, who has moved up to a combined form of government, and she saved well over a million dollars with certain things that she's done using county and city cooperation together. Now, we may not necessarily be able to go to that form of government, but we possibly could utilize that philosophy. I'm concerned because, as a child, of course, I'm a native of this town, we had Abernathy, Moss, Bay State, we had Capital Lake, and also Gold Battery, or kind of, even there. We need industry in here to provide jobs for people. People must pay their margins, people must put food on the table, and you can't do it working in McDonald's or the McNamara's. So my concern would be, first, we no longer have a transportation system. Surely there are federal grants, something available to provide transportation for the poor, disenfranchised in this community, where they can get to work, get to school. We have programs downtown for older people who have low income to finish their GED, but how do they get there? Some of them don't have cars. We need to get people motivated, and we need to provide these services to motivate these people, to get them into work, get them paying taxes, things of this nature. I believe if we can do that, we can, of course, make our city grow better and provide for all of the citizens.
All right, let me just jump in here for a moment. You're just out of time.
Okay.
You mentioned industrial development.
Yes.
Business development in the city. Of course, we've got one industrial park that seems to me to be progressing rather nicely out on Eisenhower. What do you think the city's role ought to be in developing industrial sites for prospective business?
Well, we need to have, of course, and it has been mentioned, I think Mr. Martin mentioned, or one of the previous gentlemen, our infrastructure should be, of course, built. We need the roads to get, to provide these things. I recognize sometimes that you have tax abatements, that you have to grant people to get them even interested to come to the community. We need to look forward to utilizing some of the old buildings. For example, when Gold National moves, what do we put in? There's, used to be, I guess, Martin's, the newest building on Cherokee Ford and Cherokee, it's empty. Nice sized building, what do we put in there? How do we fill these empty buildings? How do we get businesses?
So you would be in favor of granting tax abatements as an incentive for business?
If, of course, we can, of course, I want to be a little biased, offer these jobs for our citizens here in Leavenworth, I'm almost in favor of saying, hey, let's get a earnings tax for people who don't live here, who are working, earning their salaries. Let's have, let's get a proper tax base, and let's get a lot of the homeowners back, okay?
Taking earnings tax for Fort Leavenworth employees would be an order, something that would be considered?
Well, there's another in Kansas City. I had to pay it when I worked at British Memorial Air Force Base.
Okay. Well, that's a real interesting comment. Joe, thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You bet. Our next candidate is Brian Gritman. Mr. Gritman, also a candidate for the Leavenworth City Commission, is a resident of the city, of course. He's got two children, one in community college and one in Leavenworth High School. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you for having me.
Brian has a record that includes twenty years in the Marine Corps, and as a, if I can read this, fourteen years of human resource analyst, is that correct?
It was fourteen years I was in the Air Force in human resources for the Marine Corps.
All right. And he does have college experience, and he wants to be a City Commissioner. Brian, why don't you tell the voters, what about your experience and your educational background qualifies you to be a City Commissioner?
Thank you. As a father of two children, my wife and I have been struggling to pay our bills and live within our means. One of the things I would like to see is our city try to do the same thing. Our city debited thirty-one million dollars, works out to seven hundred and fifty dollars for every man, woman, and child in the city. And I think it's time that our city starts to plan and live within a budget, just like I have to with my family. I may want a new Cadillac, but I can only afford a new Chevy. So I think we need to balance things that the city really needs against things that the city would like to have or want to have. As a City Commissioner, I would vote on any tax increases, either profit or sales tax. That would be my main focus. Now, I know that emergencies come up, and there would be issues where, or times when, we would need to consider a tax increase. But my first focus would be, what can we cut? Can we cut the Aquatic Center? Can we cut the Wagon Wagons signs? Can we cut the welcome centers? Can we cut the hundred thousand dollar street signs, the welcome signs for Leavenworth? And cut out the extraneous things, and just concentrate on the basic needs in order to keep the debt down, so we don't have children growing up in this town inheriting a huge property tax increase to cover the debts we incurred today. All five of our present commissioners signed a letter asking to extend the 1% sales tax for the Judicial Center only for twenty years. That concerns me because I never heard anything from the city coming back and saying, these are the things, the specific projects, we want to spend that money on. And it was a little scary to me to see the City Commissioner all signing together saying, let's increase the sales tax, without very specific reasons why. When I budget for my family, for vacation, for groceries, for a new car, I sit down and we have to balance out, what do we need the money for, and what would we like to have the money for? Those are some of my big concerns. And as a City Commissioner, the one thing that is real important to me, because I served in the armed forces for twenty years, is I think the right to vote, and when a citizen votes, it should be honored. And I'm very concerned that the city honor and devote the citizens. And I would always promise, not for whatever the citizens voted for, because if one Commissioner feels that the Aquatic Center is also a matter of health or safety, or they can justify, for whatever reason, go ahead and build the Aquatic Center, then they could go ahead and override the vote on that as well.
All right. In that vein, let me ask you about the vote on Florida. The referendum was to fluoridate the water here in the city of Leavenworth, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yet there's been a move to request that the city somehow override that vote, ask for another vote on the same issue. How do you feel about that?
Well, I stated last night that the concerned taxpayers of Leavenworth County were nice enough to have a beating for us. I can't go both ways. If I believe in supporting the voters, and their two-thirds majority voted against Aquatic Center, I have to stand the same way on the floor I am sitting. Now, through legal means, if private citizens can find other means to bring it up to the citizens to revoke the issue, I would support them in that endeavor. But if it came to a vote of the City Commissioner, I was the Commissioner, my vote would be no in support of the voters.
All right. You did mention, and I think what I'm doing is trudging at your time just a little bit, but I'll ask you another question here. You indicated you wouldn't vote for any tax increases unless it involves some urgent or basic needs that had to be provided. Is that your statement?
Yes, sir.
Give us an example of what you would vote for, or what you wouldn't vote for in terms of tax increase.
Certainly. I think our city needs to prioritize what our needs are against ones. I may want an Aquatic Center, but I don't need increased taxes for it. I need fire protection, I need police protection. And if my police officers are not being paid a fair salary, a competitive salary to keep them in our city and grow with us, then if I have no other funding available, that would be a need, and I would be in favor for increasing taxes for them.
All right. Brian, thank you very much for explaining your positions to us. The next candidate is City Commissioner, H.B. Weeks Jr. H.B., former mayor of the city of Leavenworth, serving on the commission and requesting that the voters put him back in office for another term. Welcome, H.B.
John, it's good to be here. Thank you.
All right. Let me set the timer on you. I know that never happens, permission being given. I bet you can handle it in four minutes. Tell us why you ought to be returned to another term.
Well, my first endeavor in politics was to run for the county race. Ran those successfully on two occasions. City Commissioner was my second choice. I guess maybe the billboards trying to tell me something, maybe that's my vocation. I'm finishing up my current term. I've had an enjoyable time, I think I've learned quite a bit. I've asked the voters of Leavenworth to give me another four years to continue some of the projects that we've already started. A few things about me, you know, everybody talks about being on fixed income. I haven't done one with retirement. I think that qualifies as a fixed income. I've chosen to go back to work because I got bored sitting around. I think it would be a terrible world if everyone always had their hand out and wanted something. And I think that I've been given the opportunity to serve the city of Leavenworth, and I'd like to do that. I've been through the rigors to go through the learning curve, you know, everybody talks about spending money. No one wants to spend any money- No one wants to spend any money unless it's their particular pet rock. The real trick is to get a hold of the big picture and balance things out. You can't focus on any one facet of the city and pull that facet further ahead than the rest, because if you do, then you get behind. And when you start paying catch-up, then you get even further behind. And I hear people talk about, well, we don't want to increase the taxes. But when you look at sixty-nine percent of the budget goes toward personnel services and benefits. And if you give those employees an equitable raise each and every year, there has to be a way to fund that. A three percent raise on sixty-nine percent of your budget is a significant amount. And if it's not taken up through property tax, it has to be, or if it's not taken up through sales tax, it has to be accommodated through property tax. I think that as a city who is exempt of tremendous amount of real estate, forty, depending on forty-seven, forty-eight percent where real estate is taxed exempt, federal property, our reliance on sales tax is going to have to increase if we don't, otherwise we're gonna have to raise property taxes. We work on economic viability in the city of Leavenworth, all of the things that we do, we try and focus and get the most bang for the buck. I've said many times, let's do it right and be done with it. I think we've done a good job of that. I'd like to continue to admit that.
In terms of long-range goals and improvements to the city, what do you see on the horizon?
We have to finish the economic redevelopment of the downtown area, get that piece put together, figure out a way to fund it, and create desirable downtown environment. We completed one project, the Cody Plaza project, which brought people back into the downtown area in terms of residences. That creates more foot traffic and activity in the downtown, which should have a center district effect and create more business opportunities. There are some other things that are ongoing in terms of economic development for residences. It's a slow, methodical process, and you have to keep pulling on the signal, and we're a ball of a duck.
What should the role of the city be with its goal in encouraging new business to come into the city?
I think the city should be a facilitator. You know, you talk about tax abatement. You don't like to give away tax dollars, but when the option is to not have a business or to concede some of those tax dollars temporarily, then it makes economic sense to do that. You'd like to see it not happen like that. If I'm not mistaken, I think the Dillon Store went in without any tax incentives. You'd love to see those things happen, but it's not always at a level playing field. In order to be competitive, you have to, you have to give something racing.
H.B., thank you. Your time's up. Appreciate you being with us and explaining your views to the voters.
Thank you, John.
The next candidate would be Byron Meduska. Did I pronounce that correctly, Byron?
That's about as close as anybody gets.
Good. Byron also, of course, is a resident of the city. He's never held elected office before, but he desires to be elected to the Leavenworth City Commission. He's been, he's had a career in the United States Air Force and is in quality management. I believe, according to his brief resume here, he's worked for Z-Rocks, and he's had a career in his educational career. He's got a degree in business administration and a master's of public administration. Byron, why don't you tell us what your educational experience and background will do for the city?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I've been encouraged by a lot of people to run for the city commission. I think that we need a lot of higher level qualifications in experience and education on the commission, and it would help. I think that the Bachelor of Science in Business gives me a background to understand the problems and concerns of the business owners here. And I've talked to a lot of them. I know a good many of them since I was born in this town. And many of them think that they are treated like cash cows at tax time and pariahs at other times. And they feel that the less involvement they have in the city, the better off they are, and that shouldn't be that way. It needs to be changed. If a business in this town wants to improve or enhance its capabilities, it should be allowed to. It should be supported properly. It should not be made to be a troublemaker's because they want to improve their business. I believe it's a master of public administration degree, which is basically a governmental management degree, gives me a background in a lot of areas of government that none of the other candidates really could match. It's an in-depth program in the study of administrative law, public personnel administration, public finance, large-scale budgeting, intergovernmental relations and grants, and a wide area of other governmental functions and processes that most people aren't aware of or have very little knowledge of. I think that background on the commission would be extremely helpful to them. It also would give me the background I would need to look at the projects and programs and policies brought to the commission by various partners and others, and a little more analytical-like than most of the members of the commission could. The NPA also gave me that background in the study of policymaking, implementation, and statistical evaluation of public projects and programs. And I know how to do the research on those. I know how to ask the questions that need to be asked. I don't think I can very easily snowdove these things. And I'm familiar with the utility problems and the other sorts of things that people, that people don't know about. I also, as you mentioned, I was a United States Air Force officer, and I commanded units of as large as seven hundred people, assigned also very large directives that had full base-wide authority in decision-making capacity, and had developed very large budgets to monitor the programs under those. I am very experienced in making very tough priority decisions in budget-making, which is a big part of what the city commission has to do. In any budget, a very large portion of this non-discretionary, you have a little choice, as one of the other candidates mentioned. But those discretionary spending areas, I think, are where you're gonna need a budget. That's where your decision-making authority has to come into play. That's where the tough priority decisions are. My priorities in office, basically, very shortly, would be infrastructure, which I think is in dire need of attention, although it's a bridge that's in bad shape. Public safety items, I agree with one of these folks, that one of the only things that would really convince me to raise taxes very much at all if I did, would be salaries and other resources for police and fire. And my other priority, I think, is trying to control property taxes, because I think this next city commission is gonna have a big challenge in that area. It may be the only governmental agency in this town, and county is really gonna do it.
Let me give you a follow-up question on the infrastructure. What do you see as being a need, a priority need, in the area of improving the infrastructure of the city in the next few years?
I tell you one thing, if you are away from this town for a good while and you come back to it, one of the first things you notice is that these streets, alleyways are in terrible condition. They really are compared to other towns. I've lived all through this country and several others. And I have very rarely been to a place with poor street conditions than we have here. There are also some bridges out there, and I think right now, if they do not get some attention shortly, they're gonna have to be replaced. Be specific about one, most people probably wouldn't want to do it, but if you go out to the bridge on Three Mile Creek out about Twelfth and Oseage, and go under that bridge and take a look at it, you know it's a dire new compare. It hasn't been for a while. It's had a large crack in through the pavement for a long time. We can water salt and other minerals down through there, and it's bad, the substructure and the building is very corroded. I think more of the city public workspeople have even taken note of it. It's been this way for a good while.
You think the city is ignoring that particular structure?
Well, I'm not aware of any plans to do anything about it. I have looked at it, and I think something has been about it for too long. That bridge is gonna be in a very serious condition, and it's like the only one. There are several others. And I hear this from people around town a lot, too, that the infrastructure, the streets, alleyways, and other things are just not maintained very well here.
Byron, thank you very much for being with us and sharing your views with us.
Thank you.
I know the voters will appreciate this. I'm gonna take a break for a few minutes, and then we'll be back, and our next guest will be Henry W. Bill Johnson, Jr.